Ladies and gentlemen, you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance as led by Commissioner Markowitz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Callahan? Commissioner Markowitz?
Present.
Commissioner Leece?
Present.
Commissioner Brooks?
Present.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Present.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Present.
Chairman Morelli?
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of Deputy Corporation Counsel Joseph Lupo.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to make two announcements before we get started. Case number 3459, which is 1115 West Park, will not be heard this evening. Case number 3469, which is 125 Cleveland, will be heard at sea once first this evening.
For voting, case number 3451, application of John and Diane Joyce of 20 Ohio Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.19 A use, 9-105.19 C lot area, 9-105.19 D building area, 9-105.19 F side yard, 9-105.19 G rear yard, 9-105.19 I density, 9-113.28 off-street parking curb cut size for a new two-family house at 20 Ohio Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 58, block 116, lot 21 on the Nassau County land and tax map. Who will introduce a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny.
Who will second?
Second.
Commissioner Alvarado has introduced a motion to deny the application. Commissioner Markowitz has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Deny.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Deny.
Commissioner Leece?
Deny.
Commissioner Brooks?
Abstain.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Deny.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Deny.
Chairman Morelli?
Deny.
This application has been denied. Case number 2312, application of Beach Street Commons LLC of 48 Old Country Road, Mineola, New York, and Profeta Corp. of 20 Edison Drive, Plainview, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-106.14 new bar for a renewal of conditional temporary variance number 2312 and to increase the length of an existing bar by 28 feet 7 inches for a total of 44 feet 6 inches at 777 West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 5, lot 101 on the Nassau County land and tax map. Who will introduce a motion on this application?
I would like to make a motion to grant a two-year temporary conditional variance with the condition that the bar seating is limited to 17 seats and the current lessee remains the lessee.
Commissioner Leece has introduced a motion to grant with conditions. Who will second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Callahan has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Approve, grant.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Before I register my vote, I'd like to read something to the record so you can understand my vote. Beach Street Commons LLC requests a renewal of an expired conditional temporary variance for a 15-foot, 11-inch bar that was granted by this board on September 12, 2013. Beach Street also requests a variance to increase the size of the bar, another 28 feet 7 inches for a total size of 44 feet 6 inches. Pursuant to this board's 2013 resolution, the conditional temporary variance was in effect only, and I quote, "while the applicant leases the property." Trirest Two, Inc. was the applicant. Consequently, pursuant to its terms, Beach Street cannot renew the 2013 conditional temporary variance. Beach Street's application is for a variance to have a 44-foot, 6-inch bar. Pursuant to the Long Beach City Code of Ordinances, section 9-106.1 subsection 4, quote, "The city clerk shall not issue any license to conduct or operate a bar, grill, tavern, serving alcohol beverages for on-premises consumption, except only new license for full-service restaurants having only a service bar not to exceed 10 feet in length, to deliver drinks to employees only for service to diners at tables without any seats or stools at such bar." Pursuant to Beach Street's application, there will be 17 stools surrounding the 44-foot, 6-inch bar. Applying the city code, Beach Street's application is for a use variance. Generals, and this is my opinion, General City Law, section 81-B, sets forth that a use variance shall not be granted, quote, "without a showing by the applicant that the applicable zoning regulations and restrictions have caused unnecessary hardship. In order to prove such unnecessary hardship, the applicant shall demonstrate to the Board of Appeals that for each and every permitted use under the zoning regulations for the particular district where the property is located, one, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return, provided that lack of return is substantial as demonstrated by competent financial evidence; two, the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood; three, the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood; and four, the alleged hardship has not been self-created. Beach Street's alleged hardship has not been self-created. Furthermore, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Like many, if not most, restaurants and bars in Long Beach, the West End, Beach Street's restaurant and bar abuts a residential neighborhood. To establish that property cannot yield a reasonable return if used for permitted purposes as currently zoned as required to obtain a use variance, the applicant must demonstrate factually by dollars and cents proof and inability to realize a reasonable return under existing permitted uses. In its application for a variance, Beach Street claimed that it needed a 44-foot, 6-inch bar for financial purposes, that the restaurant will fail without a large bar. However, Beach Street provided no competent financial evidence, just anecdotal statements from individuals who spoke for the applicant. Finally, Beach Street provided no evidence demonstrating that the hardship relating to the property is unique. There are restaurants in Long Beach's West End that do not have a 44-foot bar. Although the public submitted opposition to the requested variance, the burden rests with the applicant to demonstrate factually that he is entitled to a use variance. In my opinion, since Beach Street failed to meet its burden for use variance, I vote to deny its application."
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant with conditional temporary variance.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Deny.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant with condition.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant with condition.
This application has been granted with the conditions stated on the record. To the calendar, case number 3469, application of Jonathan and Adriana Lazar of 125 Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-106.2 mixed use in order for a, oh, in order to temporarily convert a two-family house to a mixed use for a one-family house and doctor's office at 125 Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 201, lot 237 on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, sir. Name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the Board. My name is Stephen Geisler, Love Council, Pen Apple, Rhode West Block Avenue, Long Beach.
Mr. Geisler, I apologize. Would you mind just speaking into the microphone just so, you know, the recording gets your voice as well? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of Jonathan and Adriana Lazar to seek a temporary two-year special use permit to use the downstairs unit of their two-family home located at 125 Cleveland Avenue as a part-time chiropractic office. Adriana is a chiropractor. I'm going to have her speak after I finish and currently works two days a week in her office, which is closing. They reside upstairs with their young child and another child, a second child on the way any day now. The intended use of the downstairs apartment is to see patients two days a week, specifically from 9:00 to 5:00. The plan is Mondays and Thursdays, only 9:00 to 5:00, no weekends, and only the two days. This will allow her to remain at home and not have to travel to an office. Jonathan works out of the house. He will not be here during that time. And essentially, we'll be eliminating a tenant and perhaps two cars of usage. There'll be no construction or alteration to the current apartment. The front room will be used to see patients, and the bedroom will be our office. The current driveway is 18 by 18. There is a two-car driveway. Let's see. There is no undesirable change to the neighborhood. There is less of an impact as the apartment would otherwise be available, as I stated, for tenants if we were not proposing this use. The application is not substantial. We're actually losing a tenant to accomplish this, losing about $2,200 to $2,400 a month in rent to work two days a week from home, and again, seeking a special use permit that will convert back if we do not reside there. Business is discontinued or sold. The applicant cannot achieve this by any other means. We currently have a two-family. We're not looking to work from their apartment. We're looking to use this habitable space to work. This was, again, created by the storefront she was working in closing. This will not have a negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions to the neighborhood, as we've repeatedly stated, the proposal is less impactful to the neighbors, both practically and the fact that we're only seeking a special use permit renewable every two years. Again, there will only be one person every half hour for the two business days per week, never two, just one. To sum up and to be, not to be repetitive, the application also actually poses less of an impact on the neighborhood than what exists now. There will be no construction, no character change, and we're not putting signs on the home. We do not need any additional traffic access, interior parking. There will not be any change to any current landscaping, natural features, cultural features, pavement, lighting, facade, drainage, less of an impact on public utilities, no sound systems, no energy impact, and no architectural changes. Before you go to questions, would you like to hear from my client, or you have questions first?
No, I don't have any questions. You can have the client. Hi, good evening. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Adriana Lazar. I live at 125 Cleveland Avenue. Thank you so much for your time and your service to our city. I'm the chiropractor asking for my two-family home to be approved for a temporary two-year conditional permit to put my part-time chiropractic practice where our downstairs apartment exists. First and foremost, I'm a mom. I have a three-year-old son named Leonardo and about to have my second any day now, hopefully tonight or tomorrow. I just wanted to make it to this meeting. My husband grew up in this town. I spent my summers here as a kid. I've lived here now about 10 years. We met while he was lifeguarding on Grand Beach. It's your typical Long Beach love story. I started my practice, which was my first baby, from nothing, five years ago in 2020, the thick of COVID. And since then, it's become a wellness space for me, mainly for expecting in new moms and babies, and also for many service members and families in this community. Recently, the location that I practice out of, Elemental Wellness, which was located on Park and Long Beach Road, shut its doors. Many who probably have children and understand the balance, the very delicate balance, of being able to raise your kids while also provide for your family. We all have our share of challenges, sacrifices that we make. My husband travels out of state for work, two, sometimes three weeks out of the month. My mom passed away shortly after my son was born in 2023. My in-law is a snowbird. We don't really have a lot of help. So having my office in our home allows me the flexibility to be present to raise my babies while also sustaining something that I worked really hard to create. Some background information, sorry if it's a little bit redundant, but just about my practice in general and its intended setup. Since the inception of my business, I've only worked two days a week, Mondays and Thursdays, and I intend to keep those two days. I work normal business hours, 9:00 to 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, never weekends. I never want to work weekends. Who does? Important to note, I've always been and will be the sole employee. I see one patient at a time, approximately 25 minutes apart. Our home allows for two off-street parking spots that fit two large SUVs without issue. There's no need for patients to use street parking. Because I see one patient at a time, the second spot also allows for people that are arriving early or get there late. And my husband's car will be at the train station Monday through Friday if he's not away, even when he is away, if he's not there. We see a net benefit to the neighborhood's parking as we've had tenants downstairs for the last four years who sometimes have two additional cars parked in the street, sometimes more when they have people visiting. There's no changes made to our home's exterior. The interior will simply contain an adjusting table, a desk. There's no machines, no other equipment, no deliveries. This isn't a forever plan for me. It's also a sacrifice for us, giving up rental income for a rental unit. So we believe the two-year conditional term would be perfect for us. Again, we see no net negative impact to the neighborhood as I have a low-volume practice and work only the two days. We actually see a net benefit for parking, and we love our neighbors. We get along with all of our neighbors. We've spoken to our direct neighbors, all of which were verbally supportive, and many were happy to demonstrate their support with letters that I think are in the packets that you all have received. And I'm not looking to grow my practice just to sustain and continue to serve the people of this town, maybe just with a baby on my hip. We intend to reduce street parking, keep the block quiet, and allow the city flexibility in two years to assess upon renewal. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. My first question is, it might grow because you're the only chiropractor that works on a Thursday. I don't know why, but, right? What's with the Thursdays? Right, what's with Thursdays off?
But I've done it for five years and...
Okay, that's good. But now, let me ask you a question. You said that, you know, you maintain your practice two days a week, Monday and Thursday. As a temporary conditional variance, would you be amenable to a condition that the practice remains Monday and Thursday as a condition?
I don't see that as possible.
Okay. Now, because, you know, we've had other situations where, you know, people will come and we'll give them a temporary conditional variance, but the business may grow and then they might want to open four or five days a week. But you would agree to limit the hours of operation?
Yes, could I just ask that sometimes, like, a Monday is a holiday and I shift to a Tuesday? So if it's okay to just say two days a week?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not even saying we would put that in as a condition. I'm just asking if that was amenable.
Sure, that's fine.
Any other members of the board have any questions? You know, I know that typically chiropractic offices are one-on-one. They're not like a lot of other practices where there's four or five people waiting around. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against? Hand up, come up, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I live across the street. Just put your name and...
Name and address, please.
Angelina Di August, 128 Cleveland, Angelina Di August, 128 Cleveland Avenue. I have like a few family members that live with me, and we're just concerned about it. There's already like no parking on the block, and I see that they do park on my side of the block and not in their driveway. So I'm thinking that a lot of the times, like, they're going to be coming on my block. Sorry, I'm just like nervous.
It's okay.
I have like really bad social anxiety, so I'm like trying to remember. Yeah, just the parking, and we don't believe that they're actually going to be just two days a week. And like you said, it is going to grow, and I don't see why she can't just get something on Park Avenue for, you know, like, you know, for the time being, you know, because, yeah.
No, we understand. Is there somebody else who wanted to comment to?
Yeah, just basically the parking situation and, yeah, it's like pretty much impossible to park, especially in the summertime. And we don't want it to lower... Yeah, well, no, there's a sign. Yeah, there's a sign. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't agree with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come up. There's a hand there. Come on up. Name and address, sir.
One away from Cleveland Avenue.
And your name, please?
Christopher Shrek.
Go ahead, please. For or against?
Uh, for.
Okay.
I think what they're doing is great. They're great people. In regards to parking, I work in the evening time, so on Mondays and Thursdays in particular, I do park on the street, you know, utilize the gym, leave, come back, never have an issue when it comes to parking, especially on the street. So I don't see that being an issue at all for their business.
Okay, thank you, sir. There was another hand, I think, in the back. Come on up, please. One or two hands. Are they together or, okay. Name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Andrew Moreno, 123 Cleveland Avenue. I'm Jonathan and Adriana's direct neighbor, next door to him. They've been excellent neighbors. I've been on the block for over 26 years. Parking is not an issue on Monday through Thursday. It's usually dead. Most people work. So like I said, I've been on the block a long time. I've never had an issue with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There was another hand.
Good evening. My name is Diane Pryberg, and I reside at 124 Cleveland Avenue. I live directly across from Adriana and John. And as our neighbor Andrew just said, they are excellent neighbors. They've been on the block for four years, and during that time, they've established a lovely home, a wonderful family. They're extremely friendly. They're an asset to the block. In terms of parking, on a weekday during the daytime, it's not an issue. The hours that Adriana plans to conduct her business, 9:00 to 5:00, there is ample parking. Parking is only an issue on the weekends and, you know, during a busy season, obviously beach season.
Okay.
I fully support them.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Geisler, could I ask you a quick question, sir? I mean, this might be a little bit redundant because I believe your client already said that they'd be amenable to limiting to the Monday and Thursday. Would they be amenable to just nothing on the weekends?
The weekend hours?
Yes.
Okay.
The only other thing is, by elimination of the tenants, if there's a parking concern, there'll be more parking, not less parking.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm going to move to grant the temporary conditional variance with the condition that there be no weekend office hours.
Chairman Morelli has introduced a, wait, hold on, let me read that. Case number 3469, application of Jonathan and Adriana Lazar of 125 Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-106.2 mixed use in order to temporarily convert a two-family house to a mixed use for a one-family house and doctor's office at 125 Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 201, lot 237 on the Nassau County land and tax map. Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant a two-year conditional temporary variance. And Commissioner De Pasquale has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant with two-year conditional.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant with condition.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant with condition.
This application has been granted a two-year conditional temporary variance with the conditions stated on the record. Case number 3463, application of Isaac Lapitis of 115 Ocean Avenue, Lawrence, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-113.2 G off-street parking in order to maintain off-street parking in the front yard at 155 West Market Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 68, lot 50 on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Is the applicant present? Come up. Is anyone here representing the applicant?
Okay. I'll move on to the next one if they show up and call it after. Case number 3178, application of Long Beach and Park Holding LLC of 88 Heron Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.2 K use, 9-11221 off-street parking for a renewal of a two-year conditional temporary variance, number 3178, in order to maintain a doctor's office at 714 East Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 200, lot 7 on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Is the applicant present? Dr. Grushak. Good evening. Just your name and address, please.
Dr. Ira Grushak, 88 Heron Street, Long Beach, New York.
Okay. So basically, Dr. Grushak, I know you've been here 100 years, so there's no, there's no change in the practice?
Nothing changed at all.
Hours, everything is the same.
Been here 43 years, so practice is still going.
Okay, well, that's great. That's good. Anybody have any questions? This is a long-existing chiropractic office, probably been, what, almost 40 years that you've been here?
Forty-three.
Yeah, so nothing has changed.
In May of 83, so...
And just for the record, I'm not a patient, so, anyway. Anyone from the board have any questions? Anybody want to speak in favor or against? I move to grant.
I second.
Case number 3178, application of Long Beach and Park Holding LLC of 88 Heron Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.2 K use, 9-11221 off-street parking for a renewal of a two-year conditional temporary variance, number 3178, in order to maintain a doctor's office at 714 East Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 200, lot 7 on the Nassau County land and tax map. Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant a two-year conditional temporary variance. Commissioner Alvarado has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant with two-year conditions.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant.
This application has been granted a two-year conditional temporary variance. Case number 3464, application of Blairum and Legit Shatri of 512 State Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.7 E rear yard, 9-107.7 F building area for a one-story addition at 512 State Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 163, lot 11 on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening, Mr. Geisler.
Good evening. Mark Geisler, 364 West Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York, for Mr. and Mrs. Shatri. As mentioned, the scope of the work is about a 380-square-foot addition, one-story addition to the back of the residence with a roof terrace. And that roof terrace is replacing an existing deck that's on the second-floor apartment. It is a two-family house, and the Shatries live on the first floor. The addition is to add two additional bedrooms and a bathroom. Currently, the first floor has two bedrooms and two bathrooms, temporarily using a dining room as a third bedroom right now. They have four children living in the house, the husband and wife, and one of their mothers. So seven people in a two-bedroom house is kind of tough. The relief we're looking for is a rear yard setback, 9.47 feet, where 15 is required for a one-story, and a building area 46.9% where 45% is allowed. So fairly minor incursions. And we thought that the better to do, even though the second-floor apartment is larger, we'd still have to do an addition out the back to get enough bedrooms for the family, and we felt that there would be less of an imposition on neighbors to do a one-floor story addition as opposed to a two-story addition, a second-floor addition, where we'd be looking for relief from a 25-foot setback in that case. Shatries have lived in Long Beach for a number of years. They're committed to this community. Their children are involved in sports here. Mr. Shatri is a member of the volunteer fire department in Long Beach, and Mrs. Shatri is also is a teaching assistant at the high school.
Okay. So basically, I just want to get this just correct in my mind.
Sure.
So basically, the projection coming off the first floor is what causes the 9.47, and there's just going to be a deck on top of that projection?
Correct, yes, no second.
So the structure does not come out two full stories to that setback?
That's correct, yes. Just the first one-floor addition with a roof terrace.
Okay. And obviously, the building area is only exceeded by 1.9%.
Yes.
Uh, in the construction, um, now, basically, are there's any changes to the entrances or exits to the home?
No, no changes to the entrances or exits to the home. The only other change to the existing dwelling is modifying a bedroom, um, to get the hallway through, obviously, and move a closet in that bedroom.
Okay, you know, just to make sure that there's no way of, you know, reconfiguring this house at a later date to try to rent it out even a little bit more?
There's no access to the addition that's happening, just windows.
That's my question. Um, any members of the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience would like to speak?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
So, for the second floor, you're just adding a door to come back out?
There's a, there's a door there going out to an existing second-floor deck with nothing under it. Um, we just have to modify that door, we have, because it's a roof now, we have to just move that door out, so there'll be a step out to that second-floor deck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against? No? Okay, I'll move to Grant.
My second.
Case number three, four, six, four, application of Blairum and Legit Shatri of five twelve State Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point seven E rear yard, nine dash one zero seven point seven F building area, for a one-story addition at five twelve State Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block one sixty-three, lot eleven, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant the application. Commissioner Alvarado has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant.
Commissioner De Pasquale? Chairman Morelli?
Grant.
This application has been granted. Case number three, four, six, five, application of Jeffrey and Deborah Rabenier of two sixty-three West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one thirteen point two G off-street parking, for new off-street parking in the front yard at two sixty-three West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block six, sixty-one, lot one seventy-two, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Is the applicant present? Please come up. Thank you. Just state your name and address at the podium, please.
Uh, hi, Jeff Rabenier, two sixty-three West Beach Street.
Okay, Mr. Rabenier. So, tell us about the, uh, the parking spot.
So, uh, we have a one-car driveway in front of the house right now. I'm looking to expand the driveway about six feet to make it a two-car. In October, my car was hit and totaled, uh, by somebody in the middle of the night. A few years before that, my son's driver's side mirror was clipped, so we're just looking to get both cars, uh, off the street and into the driveway.
Okay, so, just looking at the, um, at the photo then, so by widening the area, you would be widening basically by removing that grass on the
Correct.
Right of the car or on the left of the car?
Uh, correct, it'd be removing the glass, uh, the grass to the left of the car.
Okay. And how many feet would that give you in that spot?
Uh, that would give me, you know, just a second, I believe it would give me twenty-three feet, uh, plus or minus a few inches.
Okay, so since the parking spot is known by twenty, uh, the length, the length would be the same as where that Ford Flex is, in other words, right?
Correct, actually, it'd be a little bit shorter, we're gonna keep the bushes right by the white fence, so it'd be, I think, eighteen, nineteen.
Okay, so basically, the car would pull up, um, is, I can't really tell a hundred percent, but is that, that fence on the side of the yard, is that flush with the house?
Uh, it's set back about eighteen inches from the house.
Oh, it is, okay. All right, so, then, you know, the other, the car, you're gonna remove the grass, and those bushes that are in front of those fences, those you're leaving, you said?
Yeah, uh, yeah, we're leaving the bushes in front of the fence, correct.
Okay, so that gives you then the same amount of length
Yes.
as you would have with the other driveway?
Correct.
Okay. What's the material that you're gonna use it? Is you gonna pave it the same, or you're gonna do the whole thing like asphalt?
Yeah, concrete with a brick paver around the border.
Okay.
Uh, like a nickel lock type paper.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, no, I understand. Um, I have no other questions. Any members of the board?
Yeah, just a quick, you're not eliminating any street parking?
Uh, no, that, because the curb that's between myself and my neighbor is too short to park a car, so you're not losing any street parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the board? Anybody wanna speak in favor of the application? Anybody wanna speak against the application? All right, I'll move to Grant.
Second.
Case number three, four, sixty-five, application of Jeffrey and Raben, Jeffrey and Deborah Rabenier of two sixty-three West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one thirteen point two G off-street parking, for new off-street parking in the front yard at two sixty-three West Beach Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block sixty-one, lot one seventy-two, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant the application. Commissioner Markowitz has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant.
This application has been granted.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night.
Case number three, four, six, six, application of Alana Misselli of sixty-nine Farrell Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point eight B height, for a second-story addition at sixty-nine Farrell Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block two zero four, lot thirty-six, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Low Keonese from Mark Anthony Architects. Our office is located at fifteen sixty-three Belmar Avenue in Belmar, New York. I am here this evening on behalf of our clients, Alana Misselli and David Leach, who are the owners and occupants of the subject property located at sixty-nine Farrell. Uh, Ms. Misselli and Mr. Leach purchased the property in two thousand and nineteen, and it is located in a residence FF zoning district and has a lot size of four thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. My office filed a permit application with the building department for a proposed partial second-story addition. This second-story addition will be located on the north side of the property, and it's approximately sixteen point three four feet by thirty-three point three feet, or five hundred and thirty-six square feet, and will be going above the existing first-floor study and den. The proposed addition will allow for two additional bedrooms as well as a full bathroom, providing some much-needed additional space for the Misselli-Leach family. We are here as a result of the proposed height, which is twenty-five point seven nine feet, where the maximum height allowed is twenty-three feet, for which we are requesting two point seven nine feet of relief. The dwelling is currently elevated above the flood zone to meet the FEMA compliance standards, and the proposed new addition is going directly on top of the existing first floor, which creates the height non-conformity. I would like to note that the house is already be, uh, the house already being raised is what creates this issue, and additionally, the pitch is proposed, um, as minimal, being six over twelve, and due to the existing first floor and crawl, crawl space below that, there is not much room to make the height request lower. We do not feel that this will have a negative impact on the environment or the neighbors, and believe this will be a positive effect aesthetically, as this home will be in character with the neighborhood. Uh, Ms. Misselli and Mr. Leach are looking to make this property their forever home and are looking for the additional space for their growing family. Also, Mr. Leach is from the UK, which is actually where they are right now on holiday, and the additional space will provide room for when their family comes to visit. This is our only request for which we're here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, um, you know, it looks like a nice project. I just have one question. So, the house was raised, um, you know, to the FEMA requirement, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the question becomes, I think you said that the pitch of the roof was six on twelve?
Yes.
All right, so is that just asking the question, is there anything that could've been done to make it a five on twelve that maybe could've taken the, the foot off or close to the foot off that might've, you know, removed the need for the variance?
Um, I did, I'm the expediter for the project. I did discuss the pitch with, um, the architect earlier today. He did say that the homeowners had chosen for a six over twelve, but I don't believe they would have a problem if that was something that you guys were looking for.
Because, because usually, I'm not sure
We just have to clarify something, please. If that was something the board was looking for. Sorry.
Yeah, because basically, just from what we've seen, depending on, obviously, the length of the house, I'm not an engineer, but generally, I think an inch, ten, usually removes about ten inches from the height, uh, of the structure. So now, since you're, you're off by about, let's see, um, two, let's say, two and three-quarter feet, um, it might become a little less obtrusive if you did a five on twelve, and a five on twelve still is a decent-sized pitch that would probably make it more in the neighborhood of about twenty-four and three-quarters feet, and it might just be a little more amenable to the neighborhood. Okay. That's my only question or comment. Anyone else on the board? Um, anyone in the audience, for or against? I'll move to Grant with the condition that the roof pitch be five on twelve.
Five on twelve?
Yeah.
Will second?
Second.
Case number three, four, six, six, application of Alana Misselli of sixty-nine Farrell Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point eight B height, for a second-story addition at sixty-nine Farrell Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block two zero four, lot thirty-six, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant the application with conditions. Commissioner Markowitz has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant with conditions.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant with condition.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant with condition.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant with conditions.
This application has been granted with the condition stated on the record. Case number three, four, six, seven, application of Robert Faschetti of eighty-five Minnesota Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point five B height, nine dash one thirteen point two A off-street parking, for a new three-story house at eighty-five Minnesota Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-eight, block ninety-nine, lots thirty-seven to thirty-eight on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Good evening again. Um, like I said, my name is Ashley Low Keonese from Mark Anthony Architects. Our office is located at fifteen sixty-three Belmar Avenue in Belmar, New York. I am here this evening representing on behalf of Mr. Robert Faschetti, who is the owner of the subject property located at eighty-five Minnesota Avenue in Long Beach. This property is located in a residence E-zone and has a lot size of thirty-six hundred square feet. We are here this evening as a result of a building permit application filed to the city of Long Beach for a proposed three-story FEMA-compliant dwelling with deck, porch, and rooftop balcony. The proposed house will have a lot coverage of forty-two point six one percent, which is compliant with zoning, and will have a building footprint of about one thousand five hundred and thirty-four square feet. However, we are here before the board tonight as a result of the proposed height of twenty-five point six feet, where twenty-three feet is the maximum allowed, and for which we are requesting relief of two point six feet. Due to the fact that the house will be FEMA-compliant, that does increase the height. However, the non-compliance goes to the parapet walls to frame the rooftop balcony. This, uh, there's a parapet wall on the top of the flat roof so that Mr. Faschetti can use the rooftop balcony to match the character of the neighborhood and enjoy the ocean views at the beach throughout the spring, summer, and fall weather. Uh, this proposed house is very similar in height to the home across the street at eighty-four Minnesota Avenue, which was used as the inspiration when drafting the project. Additionally, the code allows for a curb cut length of twenty-five feet. However, we are proposing a combination of curb cuts of thirty, totaling thirty-six point six one. There is an existing curb cut of sixteen point six one, which accesses the existing concrete driveway. And additionally, there is a proposed twenty-foot curb cut, which will provide access to both the proposed open parking area underneath the house, as well as the garage towards the rear. Being that parking is difficult and comes at a premium in Long Beach, utilizing this opportunity to allow for the additional off-street parking underneath the FEMA-compliant dwelling reduces congestion on the already narrow streets, as well as providing relief for both the homeowner and the neighbors. I would like to note that Mr. Faschetti is planning on living there along with his family and his elderly parents, his mother of which is, um, sick, has a pacemaker and cannot walk very far, so the additional parking assists them as well. Additionally, we do not feel this will negatively impact the surrounding neighborhoods or the environment. We do believe the proposed property will be in character with the rest of the neighborhood and increase the aesthetic of the neighborhood as well. These are the only items that are before the board tonight, and all of the rest of the zoning for the proposed dwelling is compliant with code. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So, I have a couple of questions. One, the current property is vacant, correct?
Yes.
There is no structure on the property?
No.
So, and then, just based on the two variances you're seeking relief on, is you're asking for two point six zero feet additional in height, and then an additional eleven point six one feet more in curb cut?
Yes.
And this, again, this is a vacant piece of property?
Yes.
Why couldn't the owner of this property bill to our code?
So, the parap, the only portion of the house is, that doesn't match the, um, for the height, I'll start there, is just the parapet walls. The parapet wall is three point six feet, let me just confirm that, um, and then the roof is flat. So, without the parapet walls, it would conform to, um, code. He just wanted to be able to use the rooftop as a balcony.
Would he be amenable not to have a rooftop?
Well, he does have the proposed deck. And if he didn't have the rooftop, would you still want it to be a flat roof?
Or whatever design, but within our building code height limitations.
Do you wanna discuss it with the client, or?
I mean, ultimately, I think he wants to get started on the project, so I think if that was the only thing holding him back, then yes, he would be amenable to that.
Now, the, the curb cut, can you just discuss again the curb cut? Is there, there's parking, um, that would be removed a little bit, right?
One parking spot.
From the house, so in other words, he'd be taking one spot off the street?
Yes.
Okay, so he would gain, the garage is a one-car garage?
Yes.
Okay, so he would have parking in the garage, parking in front of the garage, and then he wants to have another spot tandem to that spot?
Well, there's an existing irregular concrete driveway that's already there.
Okay, so basically, what you're doing is you're combining, right, like two driveways? Because it's a double lot, right? So, does the double lot have a driveway on each thirty-foot lot?
So, there's no driveway existing on the lot where the house is on the plot plan, there's only the existing concrete driveway to, on this, like on the south side of the property, but theoretically, yes, there would technically be two driveways because of the open space leading into the garage.
Okay. Um, you know, we always have, we always have a little bit of a problem with, you know, taking spots off the street in the west end, you know, basically, for the benefit of the applicant and for the detriment of the neighborhood, you know, it's just a tough, it's a tough call. Um, any, other members of the board have any comments, questions? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor or against? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in favor or against? Anybody want to make a motion on the application?
Can you, maybe one more question? Can you, so why the two driveways? Should they want to have another parking?
So, one of them is already existing, and then the, it's, it's not two driveways, it's the existing driveway that's already there, and then there's open parking space that will lead into the garage that's under the house.
So, the, the one you have to create is the one leading to the garage?
Yes.
Would you feel more comfortable talking to the client before you read any proposal?
I think in dealing with him the last six months, I'm confident that he wants to move forward, so I'm going to make the executive decision. He's, couldn't make it tonight, he tried his best, so I'm, he told me to act on his behalf, so I'm going to do that.
So, to go back to the question that was posed before, you can construct this within code, correct? If we deny the variance, you can construct the place within code?
If you remove the parapet walls at the top of the house, it would be in code, yes. It would be three feet, six inch, approximately three feet, six inches, the parapet wall would have to be there, though, if there was a rooftop balcony. And it was, we chose to put a parapet wall instead of a railing because it's safer.
All right, anybody else?
What are you, what are you combining to make the thirty, thirty-six point six one
It's... I'll let him show you.
Mr. Lupe, this is a big change.
Yes, sir.
So, are we suggesting that we can approve this without new drawings?
Well, here's the thing, right? So, suggesting that if they remove the rooftop deck and the parapet walls, right, then the, based on the representation, representation made on the record, then it would be in compliance with height, right? So, the drawings at that point, actually, it's as of right. With respect to the off-street parking situation, you know, having sixteen point six feet, then it looks like there's about five foot space in between, then another twenty feet, and the west end of parking is already an issue. It would be my suggestion that instead of granting it with the condition of no rooftop deck, if you were going to deny the curb cuts, just deny the entire application, because then everything that was built would have to be as of right, whether it's the rooftop deck or not. If they lowered the house, they could still have a rooftop deck if it was in conformance with the height.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion on it, or do we want to hold the case for a vote for next month?
I, I'm just wondering what you want to do. I think, I think the inclination here may be to deny this. If you're willing to make changes to this, that may go faster than us denying this, I don't know.
Yeah, you want, I think that might be fairer to the applicant, because, as you stated, you know, they want to get moving on it. So, what I would suggest to help you would be basically if we hold the vote and you will submit an amended plan before the next meeting, then we vote on it the next meeting, and I'm not saying it's going to be approved, but I'm saying that at least if you amended the plan, it's better than a straight-out denial, which it sounds like you might get this evening, right?
If I may.
Go ahead.
And I'm not a hundred percent certain what the board is looking for in terms of, with amended plans. If the amended plans are that the, you know, the extra two point six feet, you know, is just a little bit too much, and, you know, you're looking to reduce it a foot or a foot and a half, whatever the case, that's one thing. And the same thing with the curb cuts, because at the end of the day, if they're going to submit amended plans, if this application is denied, then they would have to build as of right, okay? If they're going to, but if it's denied and then they completely redesign it, then they're submitting a completely different application, so they wouldn't be held to the, to the one year, you know, reapplication time period, because if it's substantially different, because I believe, you know, if you all decided to deny, then the applicant would understand that either he builds as of right, or he seriously alters his design.
Well, even if he, if we held that and resubmitted a new plan, it doesn't mean we're going to approve, you know, so.
So, that's the other thing, so, but that's, but that's what I said, as far as having him submit new plans, what are you looking to accomplish? Because if you're looking to accomplish that the applicant submits new plans, and now he no longer needs a height variance, or he no longer, and or he doesn't need the curb cut variance, then if you deny it, it's the same thing, because then he's either going to submit new plans that he's, could build as of right, or you deny it, and he has to build as of right, so.
So, I'd like to make a motion. I move, I move to deny.
I'll second it.
Case number three, four, six, seven, application of Robert Faschetti of eighty-five Minnesota Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point five B height, nine dash one thirteen two A off-street parking, for a new, new three-story house at eighty-five Minnesota Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-eight, block ninety-nine, lots thirty-seven through thirty-eight, on the Nassau County land and tax map. Commissioner Markowitz has introduced a motion to grant, to deny the application. Commissioner Leece is second in the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Deny.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Deny.
Commissioner Leece?
Deny.
Commissioner Brooks?
Deny.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Deny.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Deny.
Chairman Morelli?
Deny.
This application has been denied. Thank you. Case number three, four, six, eight, application of Christopher and Saskia Shrock of one zero eight Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point six A use, nine dash one zero five point six C front yard, nine dash one thirteen point two H off-street parking, for a new front yard deck, temporary two-family use, and new off-street parking at one zero eight Cleveland Avenue, Long Beach, New York, also known as section fifty-nine, block two zero two, lot twenty, on the Nassau County land and tax map.
Stephen Kaiser, up counsel to Kenneth Apple, thirty West Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Christopher Shrock, one oh eight Cleveland Avenue, for several variances. First of all, I would like to state the applicant resides in this one family home with his wife and two children. He is a New York City police officer. First variance is to maintain a second kitchen. The second kitchen currently exists on the first floor. He's been there for four years. I'm not sure exactly how long it's been there, but I believe it's a long time. I want to stress, this is a one-family dwelling and will remain so. There's really nothing in the code prohibiting a second kitchen. That being said, we're having, we have it looking to keep it. He has a mother that comes up from Florida, and a mother-in-law that come in the summer, and a mother-in-law in the winter, and they'd like to be able to use the kitchen while they're there. He also was, like I said, is a New York City police officer, and would be beneficial for him to be able to come home at night and use a kitchen without disrupting the rest of his family. This is one flowing home, will not be used as a two-family, nor is there any intention it will ever be used as a two-family house. Second variance is for an extra off-street parking space. We're not changing the curb cut, which is important to the neighborhood, and this variance is actually very minimal. Nine by twenty is required, and what he has and was proposing is eight by twenty. The third is a home renovation where we're seeking to add a front porch from the second floor. The porch is only four feet deep, but would be going to the property line. I have photographs that he supplied me tonight of porches and decks in the president's streets that appear to go to the property line. Huh? Just one.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
How, how deep is the proposed deck? You said the deck is now four feet from the home? How, how wide would the proposed deck be?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two feet from the front of the house to the property line?
No, 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 it's four feet coming out would take it out to the property line.
No, no, I know it's four feet coming out now, currently? So, if you take it to the property line, what would it be now?
This is Neil.
I apologize, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaiser.
Okay. Trying to utilize the space for living space, it's really no impediment to anybody else, it's just really for their own use. I would submit there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood. It's less impactful, as a second parking space would be a clear benefit to the neighborhood. Kitchen is already there, would benefit his family, and the deck doesn't really impact, I understand that deck has an impact theoretically on the neighborhood, but there are others like it, and it doesn't really impact anyone except the applicant. The application is not substantial. The parking space, I said, is a one-foot variance, the kitchen's there, and the deck is as small as we possibly can make it. The applicant can't achieve this by any other means. We're looking to create a parking space, and the only form of outdoor space we can try to create is this small front porch. There's no negative impact to environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Maintaining a kitchen that has already been there, adding a space in the outdoor sitting area, we submit enhances the value of the, to the neighborhood.
Mr. Kaiser, with respect to that second kitchen, has this home been violated? Is it currently in court? Is this, is this home currently in court? Was it violated by the building department for the second kitchen?
Was it?
Okay.
No.
No, I'm not saying it was. I'm, I'm asking you.
I'd be embarrassed if I didn't know that it was.
Thank you.
But I'm told it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, basically, the kitchen has existed for a number of years, correct? As you stated?
Yes.
Okay. Was there ever, when, when did they buy the house?
Was there what?
What year did they buy the house?
I'm sorry.
When did they buy the house?
Was it four years, four years ago? Four years ago.
Okay, and the assertion is that the kitchen was there?
Yes.
Now, for this house, what are the entrances configured like? In other words, is there one front entrance that leads into the house? Are there separate side door entrances? Are there separate entrances that might lead to something that might be construed as a, an apartment? That's the question.
Well...
You can, the applicant can...
I reviewed this with, with Mr. Apple. It's one free-flowing house, there's really no setup for a second apartment, correct?
Correct. Yeah, okay. So, that's it. Anybody else have any questions on this?
I have a question, Mr. Lupe.
Please.
Why would this even be on here if it's a allowable use and they're not touching it?
Well, it's not necessarily an allowable use in the sense that, sorry. It's not necessarily an allowable use, it's the pre, I don't want to say it's pre-existing because it's not pre-existing from when the code was implemented, it was pre-existing from when the applicant purchased the home. But when you purchase a home, if there are violations, or something that, you know, doesn't comply with the code, then the burden is on you. So, what I'm anticipating, because this isn't in court, it's not like there were any complaints by neighbors that, you know, sparked the building department to go and investigate where they then found the second kitchen. It's just that they want to actually make, you know, they want to make these changes, so that's what, so now we know type of thing.
This is really just a use for his family, for his mother and mother-in-law, for several months. And I understand the board's, you know, concerns, but this is really all it is.
So, I mean, I guess my only question, which is a common question when people, and nothing against you, sir, but when people say it's just a use, you know, for when family visits, this and that, but the question I always have is like, when family visits, like, aren't you having meals together and enjoying time together? Like, why do you want separate kitchens if it's for spending time together?
Well, he's got young children upstairs, you know, there is some, when they visit, there is some separation and privacy involved. Like I said, he's also a police officer, if he comes home at night, it would be beneficial for him to be able to use the kitchen downstairs, even when the mother or mother-in-law are not there, so as not to intrude on the peace and quiet of his own family.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience want to speak in favor or against, sir?
Mr. Chairman, honourable commissioners. Yes, thank you, hi. Good evening, my name is Sahel Khan, I'm at one one five Cleveland Avenue, right across,
diagonally across from the, my friend here. And certainly, for the amendments, I don't foresee any problems, they've been there for four years, no issues at all, quiet. In terms of the amendments that he has proposed, I do see from the, the previous houses that do exist there, they have similar structural, they have similar structures, and it's not an impediment to me, and I simply don't think it would be an impediment to other neighbors. So, thank you.
Adam Steinman, one ten Cleveland Avenue.
Spell your, spell your name.
S-T-E-I-N-M-A-N, one ten Cleveland, I live right next door to them. I have no problem with anything they're trying to do. Every time they have a little noise or something, they text me before, the day before, letting me know there's going to be maybe a disruption, and as far as like the curb cut situation they want to do, there isn't enough room for a car there now, so it's not really taking a parking space away. I don't see anything, I think that people who are in one oh six have a porch that goes out to the, the property line, so wouldn't really change anything.
Just as a heads up, just so you know, the curb cut is, it's actually not a problem here.
Oh, okay.
I do have just another question for the applicant. Just, just a question, oh, okay, I'll wait, there's one more speaker, so.
Good evening, John Lazar, one twenty-five Cleveland Avenue. Just an assessment to the character of Chris, great neighbor, great people, great family. What he says, I trust. I don't see this being an impediment to the neighborhood at all, so if it can be approved, would definitely support it. Thanks.
No other question?
Just a question on the...
Go ahead.
Just on the, on the deck that you're trying to create, your neighbor's deck seems to be about a foot back from the property line. Doesn't, at least from what I can tell here on this photograph, you're saying there's other houses in this block that have a front deck like this that goes to the property line?
In the surrounding area?
You have to state your name, you have to give your name and address to the record before you speak.
Christopher Shrock, one oh eight Cleveland Avenue. Yes, in the surrounding areas, parallel blocks, there are certainly balconies that do butt up to the property line on the sidewalk. In regards to the one in particular that you're talking about, it's approximately five inches from their sidewalk, and that's our direct neighbor.
So, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You are proposing a second unit on a conditional basis, so what would the conditions be? The family, right? It has to be immediate family?
That's fine.
No, 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 I just want to know from you, I'm just asking.
Family, relatives.
Certainly, it's not going to be used for rental, that's for sure. No, I understand that, but if we're going to have a, if we're going to have an application for a conditional basis, I just want to know what the conditions are. So, family?
Family, family and relatives.
So, ordinarily, so you said that the second unit would be for, I believe, mom, mother-in-law coming and visiting, correct?
Correct.
Do you ever have any other family members other than like mom and mother-in-law visit?
Sometimes some cousins.
Do they stay up for a little bit as well?
No, significantly, no. Not like a significant amount.
Because ordinarily, if someone comes for a two-year temporary conditional variance because they want a second unit in a home, because let's say, you know, mom or mother-in-law is moving in, you know, one of the conditions that we would place on the record is that, you know, if Jane Smith is mom, it's that, you know, based on the condition that the current owner owns the home, and that Jane Smith is the only person that may occupy that second unit. Here, because it's really just being used as, you know, a convenience for, for guests and visitors, which, again, I mean, I understand you're a New York City police officer, and as Mr. Kaiser said, like, if you get home late at night, you want to use the kitchen downstairs, which doesn't necessarily make sense to me, but regardless, there has to be conditions placed on it. So, it's, so it's like, well, if we just place the two-year temporary conditional variance on the condition that you own the home, it's not really restrictive enough, like, because then you still have carte blanche, so you're saying that you're not going to rent it out as, as an apartment, right? But you couldn't anyway, like, and that's now an enforcement issue, right? So, the thing is, is the only way that we, so if we just grant a temporary conditional, you know, for, for a two-family home while you own the home, then essentially, then yeah, you can rent it out, because there's no condition that only a relative could remain there. You know, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, if you want a condition on there, it's, it's no problem.
Well, no, no, we would have to, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. What I'm asking you is, you know, if we place a condition like, ordinarily, like where I said Jane Smith, right, but it's for just family to visit, but we literally name like the family members, I mean, that are allowed to visit, it just seems kind of, it doesn't really seem to, to be very enforceable, because, you know, how, how would we ever know, you know?
What would be acceptable to the board?
Well, I can't speak to what's acceptable to the board because I don't have a vote, I'm just counsel to the board, but in my opinion, if the, you know, if the board didn't feel that off-street parking was an issue, and if the board didn't feel that the front yard setback was an issue, or maybe wanted to come to a compromise on maybe a one-foot setback as, as opposed to a zero-foot setback, I mean, to me, if, if it was me, and I do not have a vote, I would not grant the, the temporary conditional for the second kitchen. But I would grant the other two. Just my opinion.
All right, so, when people, you have in-laws, right, and you have your parents, correct?
Mother-in-law and mother.
Mother-in-law, mother. So, how about if we just have a condition, only mother-in-law, mother?
Can I speak for like one minute?
Sure.
Of course. So, in regards to my mom and mother-in-law, my wife is from another country, so when people do come and visit, it's usually her parents, but she does have siblings, nieces, nephews. In that event, usually they don't come for a couple of days, it might be, maybe a week or two. Usually, now, they stay somewhere else in a hotel. It'd be nice to have them, people from another country, come stay with us. In regards to my mom, she lives in Florida, she's a snowbird, she helps take care of our two kids. As I said, I'm a police officer in the city. As I said, I'm a police officer in the city. So, yes, I do come home late at night. For example, today, I worked a double, worked 20 hours to have the night off tonight. And yes, when I come home, I don't want to disrupt two, a one-year-old and a four-year-old that will wake up in the middle of the night. So, I do have the need to use a kitchen downstairs.
But the only thing that I don't understand is that if... And I understand your wife's from another country and you have... But why can't relatives stay with you? If you had one kitchen in the home, why wouldn't they be able to stay with you in the residence?
For example, if my mom is here for the summertime, I don't particularly need her to be eating dinner with me every single night for a couple of months. I'm sorry, but I'm not...
No, no, no. It's fine.
I'm not kidding.
It's okay. I mean, you know, I asked you a question, you gave me an answer. That's fine. Listen, I don't have a vote in this. I could just ask questions and answer legal questions to my board, so.
Any other members of the board? Anybody have any questions?
I'm going to hold it over.
Hold it over. All right. Hold it over till next month.
Case number 3470, application of Viana Infante of 106 California Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following sections of the zoning code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. 9-105.5B height, 9-105.5D side yard, 9-105.5F building area for a new three-story house with roof deck at 104 California Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 243, lot 2, on the Nassau County land and cap.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Kelly, 120 West Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, 11561. Here on behalf of the applicant, Viana Infante, the owner of 104 California Street, and we're asking for three area variances tonight. Before I get started, I'd ask Secretary Lynch if she could take these photographs and hand a copy to each of the Commissioners and Mr. Lupo as well. What Mrs. Lynch is handing you are 10 photographs, the first of which is the property itself, which is a vacant 30-by-60 lot in the west end of Long Beach, Residence E. Behind those... Behind that particular photograph are nine more photographs, which are to reflect the character of the neighborhood as far as where the placement of the garage is relative to the property line and a staircase in the side yard setback. I'm sure there's more than the nine that I took pictures of, but I think that's a pretty representative sample of that particular condition. And the reason why I do hand them to you is because we're seeking three variances, one of which is for area. Area allowed in Residence E is 57%. We're asking, I believe, for 73.75% area coverage. Let's largely do to the fact that the home is a little longer to accommodate the garage out to the curb. We're also asking for a side yard setback variance, and that being to accommodate a staircase that leads to the first floor on the, I believe, north side of the house. Staircase is three feet, six inches wide, leaving a six-inch space between the staircase and the property line. On the north side of the house, we'll have the standard four-foot side yard setback. And the last variance we're asking for is one for height. Height allowed in the area, as you well know, is 23 feet, and we're asking for a height up to 25 feet, eight inches, to accommodate a rail or bulkhead for a rooftop deck. You'll notice in the plans of the house, recedes as it rises in height to accommodate two decks, one on the top floor facing north... Not northeast, and one on the first floor that's covered, which is a deck also facing east. You'll notice that the layout includes an interior staircase. Ms. Infante will come and testify before you to tell you why she designed this house as she has. She's been in the city of Long Beach for 40 years. She's owned this particular property since 1994. The home was destroyed in Sandy, dislocating her to New Jersey where she was living with her boyfriend, now-husband Len. She came back to Long Beach in 2016 and purchased 106 California Street. She lives there now. That's the home immediately to the north of 104 California Street. She lives there. Her intention is to mortgage that house to build the house that will take her literally to her grave. "I like her, intend to live in my house until I go out in a box," I like to say. So, she's designed this house to accommodate her older years, obviously with the hope that Len is to make the same use of it as well. You'll see interior stairs that lead from the foundation area where there can be two cars parked and also hold out the possibility of parking three, obviously one tandem set if necessary. The house is only 23 feet wide, so, you know, I expect a curb cut to accommodate the code. There's also another spiral staircase that leads from the garage up to the... Well, I think I already mentioned this, from the garage to the first floor, and there's another spiral staircase leading to the rooftop deck. In between the first and second floor is a staircase that's approximately four feet wide that Ms. Infante has asked Mr. Curtis to design to accommodate a chair rail to accommodate her older years. Her intention is to, while she's still capable, and Len's still capable, of making use of the master bedroom on the top floor with the master bathroom until such time when she would live on the lower floor. On the lower floor is a kitchen, which is more or less in an L shape that runs down the eastern... The southern wall towards the western wall. A dining room, a living room, a bedroom, which is towards the front of the house. So, when she is in her older years, she can make use of the deck that's on the east side of the house, the front of the house. Other than that, I would, you know, welcome any questions you might have about the design, and then I'll ask Ms. Infante to come up and...
So, my first question is this. I mean, it's... On one level, it sounds like a very, you know, well-thought-out plan for... With no built-in obsolescence for the future. But the question I have, though, is that, you know, it's like we're segmenting this house now for different phases of life, right?
Mm-hmm.
So far. I mean, it sounds good on paper, but it's a situation where the house could also be sold in a couple of years, unforeseen circumstances, and a house like this would lend itself, besides the interior staircase, to be segmented into various rental units, as I see. You know, the notion that... There's a bedroom on the second floor, and I'm sorry about my voice. I have allergies right now. The notion that, let's say, the second floor master bedroom, I mean, it's a very, very high reach to that second floor. Why would she want to be up there at an advancing age?
No, she wouldn't want to be up there in an advancing age. So, but bear in mind where she is now, where her head's at now, where her health is at now, right? She's not old and decrepit and in a wheelchair.
Right. I see.
Okay?
I see that.
So, just like, you know, most of our homes, I mean, my bedroom and my master bathroom are on the top floor, right? I also have bedrooms downstairs. But we... You know, when the kids were little, we all tended to live upstairs. I think even with four children, we managed to put one downstairs. So, I disagree... Because, by the way, Mr. Chairman, when I reviewed the plans, I got Howard Curtis on the phone. He couldn't be here this evening because he has a zoning board hearing in Oyster Bay. And I said, "So, I'm going to potentially get this question. Tell me how..." Because I said I had one recently that I wasn't too happy with when I got the question relative to, "Tell me how this is not going to be a two-family house."
Right.
Okay. These are two... They're not distinct from each other, right? And I think you might remember the father... The mother-daughter that we were trying to do, or they're actually the father-daughter on New Hampshire Street, where then Commissioner Alton was concerned that you really just need to close this area off, and you've got two different entrances, and you're ready to go.
Right.
Right, right. This one is the staircase that runs up the north side of the premises just goes to the first floor, right? You have to enter the interior of the house. The only way to access the second livable floor is through that staircase that's right in the middle of the house.
Right.
You literally have to walk into their living room towards their dining area to get from that first floor to that second floor. The only way that I think that you could possibly... That there's even a possibility of doing what you suspect, and like I said, my first inclination was, "Okay, I got to make sure that this is done," is you would have to continue the staircase on the exterior of the building from, you know? And then seal the stairs, more or less.
Right.
The interior stairs.
All right.
So, I get the suspicion, but I... It's... And here's the other thing. You know as well as I do, as long as we've been here and dealing with these issues. For every one that we catch that is a two... You know, that Code Enforcement Officer Schu catches as an illegal two-family house, there's five others that no one ever knows about.
Right.
Right? So, my point being, you can convert any house into a two-family house if you really want to. I don't think this is homemade for that. You'd be going to great lengths, and I think also obvious lengths, you know? You'd see that extra staircase all of a sudden. They wouldn't come here asking you for the extra staircase because what would you say? What would I say if I was sitting with you? It's not going to happen. So, I just... I understand your suspicions. I just don't see it. And I... By the way, I don't see it, and I don't see it as a basis to deny this application because you're making an assumption that is not clear on its face in the plan... In the plans. And I say that with all due respect, and you know that.
No, I understand. Did you, Commissioner, you have a question?
Yeah. So, getting back to like, again, those assumptions, but here's some facts. So, why can't you build to our code? It's a vacant property. You are sitting with the first ask with the height. You're asking for two foot, eight inches more in relief. The side yard, you're leaving six inches, which you're asking for us to give you three foot six in relief, and then at a whopping 16.7... 75% more on the use of the land. Why can't you just... Why can't your client just build to our building code?
Well...
I think what I see on the house, it's a beautiful house, but why can't this be done within our code?
Because she's trying to achieve a couple of things, right? First off, she wants to have the... She doesn't want to have an interior staircase. She wants to have an exterior staircase. She wants people coming to her up the stairs. Then you say, "Well, why not?"
So, shrink the width of the house.
Well, if you... If you lessen the width of the house, you're not accommodating the home that she desires. Here's the other thing, Commissioner Lee, and with all due respect. If you took that position with every new house that's been built in the west end, there'd be 50 of them that'd be far smaller than they are now. So, I don't think she's asking for anything that's outside the character of the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. So, that is as to height. That is as to building area. That as to setbacks. In fact, if you go through the west end, you'll see a number of homes that have two staircases, one on the north side and one on the south side, by virtue of a variance. So, I don't think anything that's being asked here is substantial. I think it's in character with the neighborhood. I don't think it's detrimental. I don't think you can show it's detrimental to any of the nearby properties. It certainly doesn't have a detrimental environmental impact. So, FEMA-compliant homes, state-of-the-art construction, efficient in terms of energy, efficient in terms of heat. I don't know why she can't... She's a Sandy victim whose house was destroyed, and she's finally going to get to rebuild it. She was actually... She was out of her home, living in New Jersey for four years before she bought 106. And she was only able to buy 106, being determined as she was to come back to Long Beach because she bought it in a short sale.
But correct me if I'm wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Difficulty here is self-created.
No. Sandy created it.
It's self-created because it's a... It's an empty lot. So, she's creating the own... By doing these plans, she's creating her own difficulty.
Okay. Explain to me what that is.
Which she can turn around and redo the plans for the plans to be within code. That's what I'm saying, and that's why I believe my...
In 2018, she came to this board and proposed a bigger house with virtually the same variances, and she was granted unanimously. So, what's the difference between 2018 and 2025? And you know why she didn't build? Because the builders at that time wanted $800,000 to build a new house. She's not asking for much. Where your head is into the area of arbitrary and capricious. These are not substantial.
I actually have to take objection to that. I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
What?
I mean, that is your opinion, and, you know, you're always entitled to it. But, you know, the board just asked the question of... And I'm not saying that these variances are substantial. I'm not saying that she's asking for a 45-foot home, right? I'm just saying because of the fact that it is new construction, and we are talking about, you know, 2.8 feet on the roof. I don't recall the number on the side... The setback on the side yard, right? Is there... Are there any changes that could be made to the plans to become, you know, like even a compromise? Can any changes be made? Because I understand... I get your point, but when it comes to new construction, at least this board, you know, I mean, we actually denied a variance earlier this evening because it's new construction, not in compliance with the zoning code. So, you know, to imply that, you know, it's arbitrary and capricious, I mean, we're asking you a question.
Well, wait, 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 wait. So, let's talk about the law a little bit.
Let's go.
So, you have five elements to address. You have five elements to the law to address.
Yes, sir.
To weigh the balance between the benefits sought by the homeowner.
Yep.
Against the health, wealth... The health, welfare, and safety of the community.
Yes, sir.
Okay. She's not asking for anything that hasn't been granted consistently by this board over the last 12 years. So, you tell me, after looking at the five factors and the variances being asked for here, whether what she's seeking is detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the community, and whether her... What she's seeking wins out over, you know, the detriment to the health, welfare, and safety of the community. I don't see it.
I understand what you're saying, but I think that the... You know, by you telling me to tell you what the issues are, that's not my role here. My role here...
Well, you're the one talking to me.
No, I... But you're the one presenting this case, so you...
Right.
So...
I just demonstrated. I just demonstrated.
Okay, but I let you speak, please. But by just saying, "We don't feel that it's substantial," that's a conclusory statement.
No, it's not substantial. That's... I'm not... I'm making a statement that it's not substantial.
Okay.
Because you know why we know that?
But you're asking me to prove it to you, so I'm saying prove it to the board.
You know why we know that? Because we have built quite a number of homes here that exceed 25 feet, eight inches. We've allowed homes here that have done staircases on both sides. I just gave you photographs of homes with the garage out to the property line and the staircase in the side yard setback. I have one home there, I think it might be in Florida, where there are two cases on the side... Yes. Side yard setback on the same side.
Fair enough. And I'm not saying... I'm not saying no to that. What I'm saying is, is I also don't know the circumstances of those variances being granted. I don't know if they were new constructed homes. I don't know if there were...
Well, I think most of them are. I mean, I think it's clear to state, most of them are.
I would also say the combination of the three is the concern.
And...
At the same time.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know about the other ones, how many variances they seek, unless you want to go and look for that and prove it. But I'm concerned about the three things at the same time, Mr. Kelly.
Okay. So, what about the three that concerns you?
The... Well, if we're going to talk about one, you're right. Maybe there is sufficient evidence to say this board or others have approved that. But I'm not sure that we've approved three at the same time.
Oh.
So egregious.
With all due respect, Commissioner Alvarado, if you've gone down the west end, there are so many homes down there that have at least three variances.
I'm not going to go by viewing them. I'm sure we can pull that fact from somewhere.
Okay.
I also would suggest that maybe we put a rendering together and look at it... I, I also would suggest that maybe we put a rendering together and look at it within the context of this block. I would appreciate that.
Uh, that's, I don't know if that's gonna happen.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know exactly what you're talking about. Outline each house?
I think it'd be good to see the massing of the house next to the ones next door within the block.
Wait a second. Federal law has encouraged us to do FEMA compliant houses on the South Shore of Long Island, right? So, what do you, what do you, what do you, what are you trying to say?
I'm, I'm trying to say that...
Because of course it's gonna be bigger than the one to, to, to its north, which she happens to own, and of course it's gonna be bigger to the house to the south, because it hasn't been, and it probably was, I'll tell you something about the house to the south, having handled hundreds of Sandy cases, I'm gonna tell you, that house was probably damaged beyond repair, and somebody got in there and just fixed it up as fast as they could, and it should've been elevated. So she, she has not only been, you know, a victim of Sandy, she's coming back to do what should be done to the property, but this time she's coming back and she wants to make it for her senior citizen years. So, if you're asking me for a rendering, you're saying, oh, I'm gonna compare it to one to the other. It's not her fault that they haven't become FEMA compliant houses yet.
I'm not suggesting that, but it is, it talks to the character of the neighborhood.
The neighborhood is Residence E.
And right next to it as well.
Uh, I don't disagree with you there, but we're taking it all into consideration.
I'd be happy to do that. It would be helpful for me to see an elevation in context. Forget the rendering, elevation.
I, I think, I, I will talk to the, to the architect about that, but I think that's beyond the pale.
Maybe you're right, so it's up to you guys. I think it would help this board understand better why you're asking...
I, you know what I would suggest? What I used to do, what I said in that chair? Get in the car, go to the neighborhood, and walk the block.
I do that all the time, sir.
Why are you asking me for a rendering?
I do that all the time, sir.
Why are you asking me for a rendering?
The house doesn't exist right now.
Yeah.
It's hard to put it in context without seeing...
Did you drive over there?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I actually used to rent a house right across the street from this.
Did you look, did you look, did you look at the other FEMA compliant houses on the block?
Mr. Kelly, we're getting into rhetorical conversation.
I, I, I know, yeah. Well, can you get again?
Guys, 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 I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna stop this for a second.
I just wanna, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I agree with the two commissioners there.
Counselor, the thing is this, the thing is, is that they're not asking for something that's ridiculous, and, you know, I think you will agree too, that FEMA has changed the character of Long Beach, which it probably should've, you know, the South Shore, uh, and I think you might agree or might not agree, that in the beginning, right after Sandy, I think this board was, I was on it, was very liberal in what we were allowing and not allowing, just to have people coming back. Now, conditions change. You know, we can't have these large McMansions all over the place, and the thing is, every case stands on its own, just because we allowed, there's no real precedence, because every case is de novo. And the bottom line is, this is a house that was built from nothing, right? Being built from nothing. There are opportunities to build it a little differently. Many of the homes that we saw right after Sandy were also raises that kind of constrict what you can do. The fact is, is that I understand what they're asking for, is it is difficult, even when you drive up the block, to look at an empty lot and in your mind envision what it's gonna look like. And many times, you know, when builders come, you know, developers come, they'll put easels up, they'll build all kinds of things, obviously, they're not asking for anything as elaborate as that, but a little drawing as to how this would fit, I don't think would take more than an hour of the architect's time.
No, I, I know that, but it just seems so...
You know, and, and I think, and I think what you, your point was...
Well, taken, you can drive up the block, but the thing is, from their point of view, which I do agree with, is that it's kinda hard to envision how this thing is going to look by just looking at an empty lot.
So, how, how often, because, you know, when, when you were sworn in your second time, I was being sworn in my first time, and that's twenty-six years ago.
Right.
How many times have you asked for a rendering from the West End relative to a new FEMA compliant home going on?
I honestly don't remember, to be honest. I'm not saying you do, we do.
Right.
But the thing is, you know, the boards change over the years, as we know.
Right.
So, the board that we had twenty-six years ago isn't the board that we have today. So, twenty-six years ago, perhaps, you know, in haste, we just wanted to get cases approved. And now, you know, if certain members of the board are asking for certain things, they're not ridiculous requests, and because we didn't ask for it, when I didn't ask for it twenty years ago, doesn't mean that they didn't ask for it now, I'm just saying.
Listen, I don't deny them asking for it, I think it's unreasonable, okay? And I will ask the architect and see if my client wants to pay for it. Having said that, I don't know what the board wants. The house is recessed, right? So it's not gonna look this tall. Are you looking for a height reduction? What are you looking for? That's the question. I, I will, I will, in a second.
Yeah. I think, I think that basically they are, I, I mean, I don't know if I can speak to that, but I think that anything with, um, you know, height that exceeds, and you know some of the heights, which are really ridiculous, um, I know that, um, height is always an issue, pitch of the roof is an issue, we'll change the pitch of the roof.
This is a shed roof, I don't know, I don't think this...
Setback, setback is always an issue, and yes, there are times that we've allowed homes to go almost to the property line, questions were raised over the years about fire, equipment, egress from the home, you know, getting into a fire equipment. So, yeah, these were questions that maybe perhaps we did approve, but again, we're talking about another, you know, situation where yes, we have approved fifty-seven percent versus seventy-three percent. So we saw things that in combination, and yes, you agree that I'm agreeing too, that we have probably approved homes over the years, especially early on, that probably needed four or five variances, or three, but, you know, this is 2025.
I mean, this house is being built on Virginia Avenue on my mother's block, that are clearly monstrosities, you know? And this is, this doesn't compare to those, and there's, these are recent homes. So, and here's the thing, the board used to be a body that wanted to get to yes, and now we're dealing with a body, and I'm talking to you, Mr. Chairman, out of, out of experience and respect, now we're headed to a body that's first inclination is no. And that doesn't serve, that doesn't serve the people of Long Beach.
Mr. Kelly...
With that, I'll give you Ms. Infante.
I, I don't know if you wanna, I had a couple of que, I wanted to discuss the factors with you, you invited me to discuss the factors.
Go ahead.
So, I understand what you're saying, is, is, you know, is, is this home a detriment to the community? No, probably not. You know, you, you're saying that it's, the request isn't substantial, but, you know, are there, is there a benefit that could be achieved by alternative means? Is it self-created? So, when you say that, you know, it, it's not self-created, that it was Sandy, I understand that situation, but this situation right here and now, by not building to code, it is self-created, and there is a benefit that could be attained by other means, building to code, well, comp, making a comp, some kind of compromise. Um, I'm not saying whether or not there needs to be a rendering, I, I'm just saying that, obviously, you know, you're zealously advocating for your client, and you have your position, but just because that's your position doesn't necessarily mean it's the position of everyone else.
No, I, I, I get that, I just wanna make myself abundantly clear. The court, when the court reviews an Article 78, they're looking at history. When the neighborhood is trended clearly in one way, right? They're gonna see this board's decision as arbitrary and capricious, okay?
That's, but, but it's my job, it's my job to go against that, it's my job to, to say that that's not the case, and this is why this situation is distinguishable from others. So, to, so to me, when I said, you know, to make conclusory statements, that the court will find this arbitrary and capricious, neither you nor I could make any kind of guarantee of what a court's gonna find.
No, I, I'm, I'm just telling you, if you ever had a case made for a successful Article 78, it's one like this.
I hear you, Mr. Kelly.
I'm just saying, do I wanna bring my client through that? No.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Kelly, I mean, and, and, you know, we might not agree on that specific topic, but that's okay.
So you, you want, you know, it's, it's...
I'm not saying what I want, sir.
Is every, no, no, I'm not talking about you specifically.
Okay.
I beg your pardon. You want every new home to be built to code? Is that the, is that what the board wants? It has to be built by code, to the code.
That's what it seeks, you know, I mean, if it's a new home and there's a way to build it and still achieve the benefits that the applicant is looking for, then why not?
No, that, that, the...
I said, "And if," right? No, no, I said, "And if." But now, if there is a real compelling argument, like, all right, I need this height variance because, you know, I am currently in a wheelchair, so I need an elevator, so I need a side yard setback.
Pardon me, I just wanna follow up with a question before I forget it. The question is, you know, what, do, is, is the benefit sought detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of, of the neighborhood, of the character of the neighborhood, of the, of, of nearby properties?
Sure.
Of the environment, right? You know, is there another means to seek what she's seeking to achieve? And she, she, not Joe homeowner.
Sure.
Viana Infante, okay?
Yep.
All right. And so you're telling me what she's seeking doesn't outweigh the detriment, right?
No, what I'm saying is, is that we have a zoning code, and if you have the opportunity to, you know, to, to, if you have an opportunity to build within code, right? I mean, you're saying, does it create, you know, a detriment to the neighborhood? Okay, that's one, that's one factor, that's one, there are other things for a board to consider as well.
No, there's five, there's five.
Yeah.
Right. And self-created hardship is not determinative.
Not in and of itself, no.
And I'll tell you something else, what she's seeking is not a self-created hardship.
I respect your opinion, I don't know...
She's asking for something, it's proactive, it's not like she's saying, I'm, you know, it doesn't make any sense.
Seeking to deviate from the code when you have the opportunity to build within the code, in my opinion, is a self-created hardship.
Oh, that's, 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 I'll let Mr., Ms. Infante testify.
We could agree to disagree, Mr. Kelly.
Viana Infante, 106 California Street. I appreciate the board reviewing my application. Um, I would just like to say, we did take, my husband and I did take into consideration the surrounding homes. I bought my little bungalow in 1994, and we renovated it into a cottage, we upped it a little bit. We completed those renovations in 2011, only to hold, to lose the house in 2012. Uh, that being said, we enjoy our location on California Street for the very reasons that you're talking about. It doesn't, when I bought, there were no big homes at all, and of course, time changed. There are still smaller homes, but I'm required to build a FEMA compliant home. I'm required to build a FEMA compliant home, so I do have to go up a certain amount. What we are not building is a complete three-story with full stories home, we're not doing that. We're asking for the extended garage because I would like to have indoor parking for my car. I don't wanna, I'm getting older, not younger, and I don't wanna clean off snow. I, you know, I wanna be able to get into my garage, we have a foyer area with a dumb waiter, and I can take my shopping from Costco and put it in the dumb waiter and let it go to the first story. So, that is why we're asking for an enclosed garage. I do need some storage area. The house is not big, it's about fourteen hundred square feet, the living space, so there aren't a lot of closets. The back of the garage, currently, we're paying for a nine-by-thirty storage unit, because we're living presently in a house that's eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. I have stuff, I have Christmas stuff, I have holiday stuff, I, I have stuff. So, the back of the garage would be, um, uh, for storage. We're creating parking, onsite parking for two cars, right now we're on the street, and we're sucking up approximately forty feet of parking by parking one in front of the other, or a minimum of thirty-six feet. With the curb cut, we're only taking away one spot. Right now, we're two, two spots on the street. So, uh, the, the main level is full level, but the primary bedroom upstairs, it only comes out, it comes fifteen feet from the back, it's not an entire story. So there is a deck, it, the, the stairs going to the primary are in the middle of the house. There is a small deck upstairs as well, and then the circular stairs, the spiral stairs go to a small rooftop deck. Nothing is big. We purposely designed it with a shed roof so that the house would not be overpowering as you're coming down the block. Fifty-eight California and sixty-six California were just built. Sixty-six California, the house was no more than seven, the house that was purchased and then knocked down, it was no, it was a one-bedroom house, no more than seven hundred, uh, square feet. There are two monsters on the house. Not only, I don't know what variance is, and I, I should have looked it up. I don't know what variance is what requested, but I can tell you that the houses are very tall, very high. Not only are they three full stories, three full stories, on top of the rooftop deck, with the complete rooftop deck, there is another housing, uh, area that houses a kitchen, barbecue, where, so you can go upstairs, you can barbecue, you can do whatever it is you have.
Was the address, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't recall.
Sorry?
Did you say, did you say the address of that home?
Yeah, fifty-eight California and sixty-six California, same builder, Tannen builder, same builder. And he knocked down two, uh, one-story houses, small houses, and they are, honestly, they're unsightly, they're offensive. When I come down my block and I see those houses, they're offensive. We're not building that. We did take into consideration what is around us, and I understand that people get used to seeing an empty lot. I'm used to it, I'm living next door. We, that house fell into our lap, actually, a Realtor called when it came up for sale, and it was in terrible condition, and he called, he said, "You own the lot next door." And the reason I knocked down my house is because Long Beach deemed it uninhabitable, and I knocked it down in, had it demolished in October 2013. I still have a slight mortgage on the property, and I was required to carry flood insurance. So I called the bank, I was paying over $2,000 in flood insurance, and I called the bank, and I said, you know, "Why am I paying flood insurance?" "Well, you have a mortgage." And I, I asked them, I said, "If another flood comes in, what are you repairing?" And they said, "Whatever you fixed." Which, I said, "Well, the city deemed it uninhabitable." In order not to pay that flood insurance, I had to demolish the house. And so I, at my expense, I took $10,000 out of my pocket, and I demolished the house. So as not to pay almost $2,500 in flood insurance every year to have a house standing that Long Beach deemed uninhabitable. So, we, I love my block, I've been there since 1994, I'm in Long Beach since 1984. I've been coming in the sixties, when my family used to rent little shacks, you know, on ocean view that still had sand on the floors, and coming to the beach, and I fell in love with Long Beach, and this is where I'm staying. My daughter and her family presently, I only have one daughter, moved to the Carolinas, they were living in Rockville Center, moved to the Carolinas. It's not where I wanna go. My son-in-law will ask me, "When are you coming? When, when are you leaving Long Beach?" I said, "Give me a reason to leave Long Beach." There's no reason. I love my community, I love the West End especially, because it's a walkable community. To be honest with you, when I bought, I wasn't a fan in ninety-four of the West End, I wasn't a fan, but it was the only thing I could afford. And so that's what I bought. And I've learned to love the West End because of what it has to offer, and I don't wanna be anyplace else. That house that we're proposing to build, we, my husband and I spent a lot of time designing it and considering every inch, and we took into consideration the impact it would have on the block. If you ride down the block, you will see much, much larger homes, much larger homes. We're not doing that.
I understand, and with that, you know, I don't, I'm gonna look into fifty-eight and sixty California, 'cause I'm curious now, right?
Fifty-eight and sixty-six.
And sixty Cal, sixty-six, I'm sorry. But in any case, um, you know, Mr. Kelly had made a, a representation, Mr. Kelly, that you said that this used to be a board of getting to yes, and what I asked was, is was there any way, is there any compromise, is there any way to minimize any of the variances?
So if we... So, if we-
Hold on, please, I'm sorry. So, pretty much, you know, instead of, you know, anybody entertaining any possible compromise that might be available, it was, then just said, "No." So, that I took it as no, so it's pretty much, this is our application, and if you don't grant it the way that we say that we want it, then you're a board of no. But where's the compromise? How do we get to yes if nobody's going to budge?
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking.
Well, I can speak for my attorney, I can speak, you know, for myself. In the, what, what we possibly, and I would speak to Lenny about it also, what we can compromise, I feel, if I was not to have the interior garage, but I hate to give that up, because I really don't want clean snow off my car in a blizzard. I'm not getting younger. I want to be able to get into my car from the interior of my house and get to a doctor's appointment if I needed to. I want to be able to have the freedom to come, the ability to come and go without too much difficulty as I get older. I purposely designed the four-foot staircase to get up to my primary bedroom. Listen, my intent is to walk till the day I die. I have a, a, a dog, I walk a minimum of five miles a day. I'm healthy, I don't take any medications, I'm 72 years old. I don't take any medications, and I plan on not. You know, I eat healthy, I live a healthy life, I don't drink, I don't do drugs, I don't smoke, I don't do anything. All I want is quiet, peaceful enjoyment on the lot that I had on California Street, because I love my block, that's all I want. So, if I took away that, that, the front of that garage coming, you know, out, that's going to take away one of the variances, which is the area square footage. That, that's going to take that away.
It would.
Because now, but what I will do is I'm going to recess that wall back, because I need to have two parking spots onsite. Because a lot of these houses, a lot of these houses are built with an entrance and a garage door, and the driveway to get into your garage, but the driveway cannot accommodate a car. And if you try to park in it, you're now on the sidewalk. And I'm a walker, and that's annoying for me to, I have to now leave the sidewalk and go into the street and walk around somebody's car. So, I would need to have that wall recessed all the way back so that I can accommodate two cars. Because I need onsite parking. Would I like it to be enclosed? Oh, my God, that's my wish, you know? But if I have to give up something, and I'll talk to my architect about that, that would be, do you agree, that would be what we would give up, if I had to give up something?
I'll tell you what, you don't have to literally make a, you know, like, agree to give something up in its totality right here and now. What I'm going to recommend to the board, and they could totally disagree with me, but I'm going to recommend we hold this case open for another month, and Mr. Kelly and I speak often, um, if, you know, you have any ideas of, you know, maybe I could take a little bit here or reduce that there.
I don't know where else, I'm sorry.
I'm not a hundred percent, and, and listen, I'm not even saying, like, eliminate, you know, like, eliminate every variance, but I mean, if, if you could reduce one, eliminate one, like, I'm not, you know, like, when it's a new, new construction, this board now really does try to have the person build within the confines of the code.
Please check out fifty-eight and sixty-six, because that's new construction.
I don't, I have no idea with the, with the, with the facts of those cases, Mark, but I, but I assure you, I will look at it. And I also don't have a vote, so I could be saying all this right now, and the whole board could disagree with me. I'm just asking some, asking questions to see if, you know, again, is there a way to make everyone happy, including, you know, the precedent that we set here?
Okay, so I'm a little bit in a, in a rock and a hard place, because I'm not exactly sure what it is you're looking for, and now we're waiting another month. I was really hoping to break ground, uh, this year and to move forward. Um, we've done a lot of work with trying to find the right builder, the right price, getting our finances together. It's been a long haul. I have not given up my dream. My mom used to say, if I could just tell you, like, a little story. My mom, who passed two years ago, when Sandy came through and I lost my house, my mother cried. I said, "What are you crying about?" You know, my mother, I think, was 84 at the time. I said, "What are you crying about?" Nobody lost their lives. I understand now why my mother was crying. I didn't feel the degree of loss that my mother knew I was going to feel. And as time went on, and it was just difficult to get this house thing together, my mother would say to me, "Do you think I'm going to live long enough to see your, your new house built?" And I would say, "Mom, I hope I live long enough to see, you know, me get my new house built." And so, it's been a long time. I'll wait another month. I don't know exactly what else I could do, especially in the house. There aren't even that many closets. He's got a closet, I got a closet, you know, there are two bathrooms, you need two bathrooms in a house. It's not, it's a two-bedroom house. It's not a big house, it's 1,400 square feet. I don't know what I'm taking from where to make it smaller, to, you know, it's not, I don't know what else to do.
How, um, big is the rooftop deck?
Fifteen by, the width of the house is by fifteen feet, it's not big at all. And the reason that I'm getting, that I really would love to have the rooftop deck is because right now I'm in 106, which is on the corner. I always lived on 104. The noise level is very different between being on the corner of Park Avenue, you know, but I get the sunrise, I see the sunrise, and then I'll be able to see the sunset as well. I'm dying for that. I'm a boroughs girl, and I grew up in Queens. And I lived for a very long time in a small Tudor-style type house in Flushing that had, I call Tar Beach. It was a six-apartment, six-family, uh, small building, three on each side, and I would go up to Tar Beach, I don't know if anybody's a borough kid here, I would go up to Tar Beach to sunbathe. I have the beach here, which is great, but I want my view of the sunrise and sunset. I'm, I don't think I'm going to see the ocean, I'm too far away. I would certainly see the bay. It's just, it's going to be my little zen garden. I just want to go out feet-first from 104 California Street. I just want to have peaceful enjoyment in my house.
Just so you know, 110th Street and Liberty Avenue, Ozon Park.
Sorry?
110th Street and Liberty Avenue, Ozon Park.
110, yeah.
Borough kid.
That's it. You know, and that's what I've grown to love about the West End of Long Beach, it's very urban, it's not suburbia. Forty-by-hundred lot, you have lawns to cut.
Anyone want to open up to the audience? Anyone want to speak for or against? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Reddick, glad to have me. George Ennis, 94 California Street. I'm neither for nor against. I'm here mainly as a concerned neighbor. I am concerned about our development, it was brought up quite a bit today. Uh, it sounds, just some general comments. It sounds as though, um, code is no longer code, and I, I commend you for trying to stick to code, because I stuck to code, a lot of people stuck to code. Then suddenly, everybody came up with variances, and it became the norm. So, I understand, I'm not trying to deny anybody. Uh, I'm, I'm friends with V, she lives on the block. I just want to understand what exactly is going on before I make some comments. I'd like, if I could see a rendering of the, of the house, would that be possible?
Ms. Ennis, there is no rendering of the house, that was something the board requested.
Absolutely requested.
It's not, and, and to Mr. Kelly's point, um, in a single-family home, it's not something that we always receive.
Okay. It's just, it's hard to envision, I'm not an architect, so it's hard for me to envision what the house will look like.
I am, and it is hard for me to envision too.
Yeah. Um, and V is correct, there are two monstrosities down the block. But because there's monstrosities, and houses being built to, you know, a godzillion replicas in a, in a small area, doesn't make it right. It doesn't mean that it has to keep continuing, because somebody builds a house, I can build one that's bigger. Somebody's got two decks, somebody's got three. I mean, every house now has three decks. I have one deck, and I can, I swear to you, almost every night, my wife and I, to the unfortunate of a lot of our neighbors, are the only two out there sometimes, because we like to stay on occasion. But we're the only people, people don't even use them, but people have them, so everybody else has them. But again, that doesn't, that's got no bearing on, on what they want to do. And I'm not here to, again, to neither approve or disapprove, I just want to find out a, a little more. And I, I have to take a little bit of a difference of opinion with, with the lawyer over here, Mr. Kelly. Uh, he talked about the character of the neighborhood, I'm not sure what character of the neighborhood he's referring to. Because to me, the character of the neighborhood is changing quite drastically, and I'm not quite sure if it's for the better. Because, again, as I mentioned before, um, every single house that goes up seems to try to outdo the one that's put up before it. That's just my general comments. One thing I am adamantly opposed to, however, is the parking situation. Uh, right now, there are, it's California streets, a narrow block. There are people, and I understand Viana would like to have easy-
Mr. Ennis, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, sir, but just so you know, with respect to this home, this only board only has the, the ability to hear an appeal of a denial from, from the public.
Okay.
Parking, it's not an issue in this case.
It's not an issue, okay, so that'll, okay.
The parking they need, they have.
But I, I share that comment, and that's, uh, I think that's all I have to say. All right? But that's, that was the main point I wanted to bring up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
There's somebody else? Yeah, all right.
May I, may I just make my comment?
Um, okay.
I must say that I am in agreement with Mr. En- Ennis, and that's why I find it offensive when I see these tremendous homes going up. I'm hoping that the board is not going to make an example of my small little home. There are things that are being built now, presently, that are monsters. You know, Mr. Ennis, directly across the street from him, has a new construction home that's a very, it's beautiful. I'm not taking anything away from it. It's beautiful, it's a monster house. It's a very large house. I don't know if any variances were required for that build, but he's looking at a monster house, you know? So, I don't, I hope that I am not going to be made an example of when my house doesn't even, what we're proposing to build does not even compare to what is presently on the block now that are three stories.
Ma'am, I, 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 I just want you to know that the board doesn't try to make an example of anyone.
Thank you.
There are, there are objective legal criteria that it has to consider, right? With that, there is no one factor that is ultimately determinative, deter, uh, excuse me, yeah, determinative. Um, it's, it's, it's a weighing test, it's a balancing act, right? So, I can, listen, I, again, I have no vote, I'm simply the attorney for this board, but what I can tell you is that nobody is singling you out or trying to make an example of you, and I do not know how they're going to vote. I don't. Um, because there are times where, and, and you could check record, check tape, because we're on YouTube, where I've been up here vehemently opposing things, and then all of a sudden, the next month comes and everybody says, "Grant it." I'm like, "Okay." You know, like, it's, I don't have a, a dog in this fight, but nobody's making an example to single you out.
Well, and I appreciate that. Given the fact that I, I have to build a FEMA-compliant home, the homes around me are not, so I'm going to be larger, just for the fact that the homes around me are not FEMA-compliant. I can't, I shouldn't be penalized for that either, just because, they should be FEMA-compliant. Eventually, one day, everybody's going to be FEMA-compliant. So, for me to build on that lot and, and not build a FEMA-compliant home, I won't do it.
FEMA-compliant is code, ma'am.
Yeah, it's code, well, that, but the houses that exist-
This is not code, this is not code. And when you talk of a monster homes, and all I was asking for was some reference to the comments that were being made about the neighborhood, your, your home could be construed a monster home unless you put it in context of what you're talking about. And even for people who do this for a living, taking this and trying to envision what it looks like in that block is very difficult. So, it is up to you whether you want to put it in context for us or not.
Well, the home is surrounded by a one-story.
I'm talking about the rest of the block, the same block you keep referencing.
Yes.
With other monster homes. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, that's what I'm trying to give you-
Now, I can make my own, I, I visit this block all the time, we do this for a living. So, when you refer to a monster home, just think of the fact that your home is a monster home too, under the same standards.
So, my, I'm going to respectfully disagree.
I agree, I, I respect that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, when I say a monster home, I'm talking about the homes that are three stories and they're three full stories. They have A-frames, three full stories. So, when you're walking down the block, you're traveling down the block, you see a wall of a house. That's not what we designed specifically. You're going to see the garage, and then you're going to see that the house starts to level back.
Respectfully, ma'am?
The roof deck on this house is at the back of the house. It's not forward, it's at the back of the house. So, yes, I'm surrounded by single-story homes. 106 California is four feet up in the air, and that's it.
Those are not the homes I'm referring to.
Which homes you, um-
The monster homes that you see on your block.
The ones that, yeah, that I just-
The ones that you don't like.
The ones that are three-story, that are not just on my block, there were lots more.
But here's the thing, with the three-story homes, right? So, even take, you know, the subject home that, your, your home, right? You're just talking about these big, square homes, deck, deck. If that house, but that's three stories, is 23 feet above freeboard, which freeboard is the height above, like, for the FEMA, right?
Yes.
So, now, I'm, I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't recall what the freeboard is in this, in this zone, right? But let's say it's eight feet, right? So, when you calculate how high the house is at 23 feet, you go up eight feet, and then 23 feet from there, right? But let's say that happens, and now they still build out, in the shape of a rectangle, with a front deck, but the house is only 23 feet tall, it has the proper setbacks from the neighbors, it might objectively just be larger square footage-wise, but it still might not need any variances. So, it's not just the size of the home, it's, it's the variances, and this is just what we need to consider.
Okay, I don't know what else, you know, I can add to-
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I think this case will remain open for voting.
I will see if I can get you a rendering, Commissioner Alvarado.
I think you should reconsider some of the garage things as well.
I, I, I think we're already discussing that.
Yeah, because if you look at the rest of the neighborhood, this block, although there are garages that are set back, that probably construes the character of this neighborhood better than what you were saying.
Well, when we say, just so we're clear, when we say neighborhood, we're not just talking about this block.
I understand that, sir, I do understand that. You've said it twice.
Right. I'm, but you would agree- I'm going to say it until, until no one's going to listen.
You would agree that in this block is also part of the character of the neighborhood.
Yes.
Adjacent and things that she is referring-
It's certainly, let's put it this way, it's certainly the character of the neighborhood of one time past, right?
Okay. The immediate one, sir, the immediate.
No, 13 years ago, that, that, that changed everything.
The immediate character of this neighborhood, the immediate character.
No, it's the, it's the immediate abutting properties. The character of the neighborhood is residency.
I understand that, I'm just trying to help you, you asked us what may help us.
I appreciate the fact that you actually said something about trying to adjust something. I, I do appreciate that. You ask yourself, before I go, why are you even here? Why do we have a variance board? Why do we have zoning and a zoning variance board? That's what I'm going to ask you, to, to reflect on. I'll reflect on it as well. What I'm going to reflect on is this concept, if you're going to build something new, it better be in code, no ifs, ands, or buts. It may be a good policy, I don't think so.
Mr. Kelly, I'll just, I'll just end it with this. It's easier to build new and come closer to code than it is when you do a lift. Because when you do a lift, you have a lot of constraints you're starting out with.
I, I agree with you.
All right? All right, the case will remain open for voting.
Thank you.
Case number 3471, application of Patrick and Jackie Connell of 521 West Olive Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine-dash-one-zero-five-point-one-C front yard, for a new front yard deck at 521 West Olive Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as Section 59, Block 25, Lots 65 through 66, on the Nassau County land in Texas.
Uh, good evening, Patrick Connell, Jackie Connell, 521 West Olive. We're here for one area variance for a front deck off of our second story above the garage. We have some, two houses in our area, the one on the, uh, left is very similar to what we are, um, thinking of doing, sans the roof. are thinking of doing, sans the roof. And, yes, there's, there should be enough for each individual person. And, yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically it. I guess the one other thing I have is, I have a overhang on my house, so the, oh, what's it called?
Yeah, the survey.
The survey, it's, we came into an issue where we weren't sure, the survey, the, the survey measurements, so we have a separate set of plans to submit, as if, it's not going to change where the deck is going, it's changing the, the distance. Yeah, yeah. Just in case, because we weren't, our surveyors retired, and we had trouble even finding that person, so we weren't able to clarify. So there is a two, there's a two-foot overhang that, it's either parallel down from, it's flush from the second floor, or it's all the way to the wall of the first floor, we're not 100% sure.
What's the width of the deck?
Twelve feet. Yes.
And the projection from the house?
Should be seven.
That sliding door is there at present, or there's nothing there right now?
There is a, a double window.
I'm sorry, when you gave up these photos, you said, you gave the example, you know, the example of-
The left, sorry, the left side is-
256 is what you're-
Yes, that's exact, and then the, the one on the right is five houses down from me, it's a new, new construction, and then it's similar to the variance that I think I'm applying for.
So now, I'm sorry, with the amended plans, I was, I have a DVD, so, so, what's different with the amended plans?
So the amended plans is just based off of a ambiguity with the survey. So the survey, we, we couldn't get in touch with the surveyor, and the company got bought, and all those things happened. And so, it's either, the way the overhang works, it's either a measurement from flush with the second floor-
Okay.
-or it's two feet back flush with the, like, first floor wall that's furthest out. So there's a two-foot difference, where it's either going to be 14.7 or 12.7.
Okay.
Now, I, I'm, unfortunately, I'm not 100% sure which one is correct, I think once the deck goes up, we'll, we'll have to do another survey, I just wanted to cover my, my basis.
But with that, it's, it's basically just the point where the measurement is being taken from not a difference in the actual design.
No, yeah, the design is entirely the same.
The deck is the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions? It doesn't look like an imposing deck to me.
No, it doesn't.
I was going to say, we only want one deck.
And it's seven feet, I mean, we, we're proving seven feet, next. Anybody have any questions? Anybody for or against? I'll move to Grant.
I'll second.
Case number 3471, application of Patrick and Jackie Connell of 521 West Olive Street, Long Beach, New York, for a variance in the following section of the zoning code ordinances of the city of Long Beach, New York. Nine dash one zero five point one C front yard, for a new front yard deck at 521 West Olive Street, Long Beach, New York, also known as section 59, block 25, lots 65 through 66, at the Nassau County land and tax map. Guys, don't go, there's one more case and an extension. Who made the motion?
Me.
Chairman Morelli has introduced a motion to grant the application. Commissioner Callahan has seconded the motion. Commissioner Callahan?
Grant.
Commissioner Markowitz?
Grant.
Commissioner Leece?
Grant.
Commissioner Brooks?
Grant.
Commissioner Alvarado?
Grant.
Commissioner De Pasquale?
Grant.
Chairman Morelli?
Grant.
This application has been granted.
Great. Thank you very much.
Are you here for case number 3463, 155 West Market Street? Okay, we called the case in the beginning of the calendar, so we moved on.
Yes, I actually was watching on YouTube as I was driving, and I realized, I spoke to Mr. Kaiser, I think he was here with the background. And he was doing coverage, and when I spoke to the lawyer today, I was notified that it was going to be an attorney representing. So when I heard you call it, I came all the way back, and when I discussed with him, he said he did not have the files.
So are you, are you presenting tonight?
Well, I was going to-
You don't have to, you could adjourn, you could adjourn it to next month.
We'll adjourn it till next time.
Okay.